... time with the alarm companies, how quickly they were getting notification that the panic alarms were being tested or activated and working with the staff and all the partner agencies and quickening up those responses.
I think just to shout out to Mr. Grimm too, without doing those safety checks, we would have never known that some of the alarms didn't work or the response time is over several minutes in order to get law enforcement notified. So that partnership definitely, definitely helps keep people safe.
And we were able to work with PRMR to correct those incidences so that our response time of the second time we tested our panic alarm were all under at least a minute mostly at thirty-two second, which is an acceptable range. Next is moving to a new safety procedure. So last year, we had a committee that was formed of Wassa School District Administrators, Pupil Services, Wassa Fire Department, Wassa Police, Wassa Police Department, and the Sheriff's Department where we vetted several other safety programs and we landed on SRP or Stand At Response Protocol. We moved away from Alice in favor of SRP mainly because of the clear and standard and unified terminology that it brings. And as you heard earlier, SRP is founded by I Love You Guys Foundation. All the material is free for us or for any other district and it is a very popular and one that's utilized throughout the nation. We're hoping to bring it more to Marathon County. But within that framework, it provides five key action steps. One is hold where if there's an incident in the hallway, the students are remaining in the classroom. It's business as usual. It could be a maintenance issue. It could be a medical issue. It could be a student issue. Those usually last for just a few minutes and then it's cleared and students go back to normal procedures. Then a secure is if there's a danger on the playground or outside of the property. Students go inside and they stay inside, but business continues as usual. There's teaching in the classroom. There's hallway, hallway time as well. So that could be if there was like a law enforcement issue nearby. Recently, we had a house fire near one of our playground properties, so we went into a secure. Or maybe there's a suspicious person on the playground. Then there's lockdown. That is if there is immediate danger within the school. There students move to a out-of-sight location within the classroom. They remain silent until individually cleared by law enforcement. There's evacuate, which students would leave the building and leave the building to go to a secure assembly location. That could be in a controlled manner if there was like a gas leak or a power outage, or it could be connected to a lockdown. Then there's shelter, which is just remaining in place because of an environmental danger such as a tornado, at least in our area. Our staff and students do practice these drills, which I'll highlight in a moment, but I'm going to let Lieutenant Pauls talk about the importance of this common language between the school district and first responders.
Thank you. A lot of this terminology is pretty common for us in law enforcement for some of the trainings we do for room clearing, things of that nature. So incorporating this into school safety, it's an easy mesh for law enforcement. I think if you look at the wording and the terminology, when things get hectic, keeping things simple is best practice. And then within this framework, it actually does that for the school safety protocol. So we're definitely on board with the transition and the switch.
Within the SRP, we've already talked about the five commands. So within the Wassa School District, the first drill that we practiced was the lockdown drill. So all schools participated in a lockdown drill on September 30th. Prior to the drill, a parent letter went out introducing SRP in the lockdown procedures. On the day of the drill, teachers showed students a presentation that had age-appropriate lockdown procedure videos. And at the time of the drill, administration made an announcement indicating the start of the drill and then repeated several times that this is just the drill. The panic alarm played over the PA system indicating that students needed to get into a classroom and that the school was in a lockdown. After the lockdown for a few minutes, an SRO or administrator cleared each classroom individually. This was followed by another announcement saying that the lockdown was over and again it was just a drill. And then afterwards, we made, we made an announcement that we had our pupil services professionals available in case any student needed additional support. From the reports that I received and the follow-up from the building principals, the lockdown drill went very well. I received also a few emails from parents thanking us for going through this procedure. So all in all, I would say our first district-wide lockdown drill was very successful. Then, we also practiced an evacuation drill. And this was the first time that we made it mandatory that every school would evacuate in some sort of manner. In the past, we've had it be kind of optional and most of our elementaries participated. But when you're trying to evacuate a thousand four hundred people from West, it's not easy. But yet, we felt it was very important that they at least practice that and made an attempt to see what it would look like. So on October 21st or the 22nd, every school participated in the evacuation drill. We gave them some options. Again, because of size and/or depending on where their secure assembly location was, they could either evacuate as a whole group to the secure assembly location, have a conversation, and then return to the building. They could also schedule like classroom by classroom to the evac site, have that conversation, return, and/or again based off of the location of that secure assembly location, they could go to the end of the school property, have a conversation about if this was an emergency, we would go to. Like for example, Maine chose to go to the end of their property instead of crossing the highway, walking through ditches for half a mile to get to their secure assembly location. So we felt it was in the best interest of the students to stay safe, but yet know the relocation center. If the students did not go, from my understanding, staff did participate and at least walked to that location so that they knew that. Again, from all the feedback that we received, the drill was very successful and pupil services were available afterwards for any students that needed support. And really, why we're here is to celebrate the partnership between the Wassa School District and the Wassa Police Department. So it's a great honor to celebrate this partnership. And I often seek support from either Lieutenant Pauls or the SROs almost on a daily basis. They're always very professional, very respectful in their responses, and always willing to help. They're not only an SRO, they are a valued staff member, and they have an invested interest in the overall well-being of each of our students and staff. They serve as an SRO, but in addition, they are a role model, a leader, a coach, an advisor, and they provide that sense of security and safety to our educational environment. Officers Stetser and Officer Kutschenreiter and Officer Price, all of them, I've asked them to share a little bit about their connections with students, how they serve the school that they're assigned to. But as you heard, they each also serve elementary schools. And then a little bit about why, if we see two or three squad cars at a elementary school, why might that be? Like what's the reason why we see officers at schools? And then if they are, if they are part of a threat investigation, what does that role look like from the police standpoint? So we'll start with Officer Stetser.
Thank you. So I've been at Wassa East for, I think, eleven years now. One of the benefits about being an SRO is not only that I get to bring an awesome dog to work with me every day, but the relationships that I get to build with students because of my role is not only beneficial for building trust with the community in our role, but helping that individual out as well. I've received numerous phone calls from students in the past that would thank me for just being there. Maybe they have a rough family life or something bad happened, traumatic in their life, that as a kid or even an adult, sometimes we don't know how to deal with those things. And having somebody in the building that you really rely on and that you can trust to help you get through that situation is I think something that SROs can bring to the table and really help that kid out later in their life. We've had the pleasure of having several therapy dogs in the schools. In 2017, we had Badge Start at Wassa East, and he was the sixth dog in the country to be with a school resource officer and the only dog in the country that was a personally owned dog. From then, that program has really taken off to the point where we have three therapy dogs now at the police department. And I credit the dogs for doing all the work. I mean, nobody comes up to us and just like, "Oh, hey Officer Stetser, it's good to see you." But we have kids every day, numerous times a day come up and pet the dog and say the only reason why they're at school is because they want to see the dog. So building that relationship is crucial for our role and important in why I keep coming to work every day is so I can keep building those relationships with kids.
So is it your intention to have each of us share our reasonings for being in the school and what we do?
If you can talk a little bit about your role.
I'm happy to, yeah.
And then if you were part of a threat investigation.
Um, so I thought you did a really good job, Nick, talking about the reasons why you come into work each and every day. I'm going to throw you under the bus. You nominated each and every one of us in turn, saying that we were going to be the spokesperson, and I think you should just do all the talking because you did a great job. I'm in the middle school. I went to school to teach. Some of you may or may not be aware, I have a spouse that works in the building that I work in. So I'm really, I don't, I don't have a therapy dog with me in the building at this point, but I do have my spouse, and that's a really good motivator to come to work every day. I'm very busy in the middle school, so I would say maybe on a week-to-week basis, I probably see my spouse two or three times a week actually at work. Otherwise, I'm usually running around. Middle school, I, so I'm at John Muir. I serve approximately a thousand and change middle school students just at John Muir alone. I also serve GD Jones, Maine, Rib Mountain, South Mountain, Thomas Jefferson. I think I've called, I've, I've named them all. I serve five, six different elementary schools on the west side of the river, and they keep me very busy as well. Speaking to the threat investigations at the schools, I've been involved in, I would say, a half a dozen threat investigations to date the school year alone. Of those six threat investigations, each and every one of those resulted far more in an educational opportunity for the students that were involved or are subject of those threat investigations and an opportunity for me to encourage staff and admin that they are correct in their decisions and reinforce the decision-making that takes place in the school, encourage parents and, and other students and other people involved in the threat investigation that, I said encourage or reinforce? I'm kind of on the spot here. I'm trying my best to reinforce everyone involved in the threat investigation that the decisions that come out of these threat investigations, we're not getting to those decisions without reporting, without good documentation, without sound decision-making, without bringing a variety of different people to the team, to the table to determine how do we move forward from what happened. None of these threat investigations that I've been a part of, none of them have resulted in any sort of law enforcement action. They've been more restorative than anything. And I think, for the most part, my role at John Muir is that of being a restorer and someone to stabilize things, someone that can be seen as capable and professional and with safety at the forefront of everything that I do. And I really enjoy being in the middle school. I really enjoy the opportunities I get to go to the elementary school. I wish that I could split myself into three or four equal parts and, and be more present in the elementary schools than I am. It's very difficult just to schedule time to leave the middle school because as they say, when the cat's away, the mice will play. And usually, when I leave the building, that's when, that's when we have a couple of behavioral issues. And but for the most part, I, when I get to the elementary schools, I feel like the time that I spend at the elementary schools, even if it's a pop-in, it's time really well spent. It's time to connect with kids that are really struggling, that come from a, like a predominantly trauma-backed upbringing or environment. And, and I think that they really value those opportunities to connect with me and connect with someone that doesn't work necessarily as an educator, someone that works with the school but isn't going to be a teacher that documents their misbehaviors. They can, they can talk to me. They can rely on me to listen. I really just enjoy the opportunity that I have to partner with the school district. And I feel very, very fulfilled in the role that I play.
So I'm Ben Price. I'm the newest SRO at Horace Mann. This is my therapy dog, Birdie. I forgot to introduce her earlier. So she just started with me. I took over for office around this time last year. So we got Birdie this September and started working with us. And I can say that the overwhelming amount of positivity in the building, which is students and staff, has been incredible. She just brings a lot of joy, I think, to kids come every day. Like Officer Stetser was saying, I mean, when she's in the building, kids usually want to see her. They're not, they don't care if I'm there. It makes me laugh. But I'm glad that she's bringing so much joy to the students and staff. I just want to touch a little bit on a couple of things. Like Officer Kutschenreiter was saying too, with, you know, I do serve, I only have, now that we've combined them, had the consolidation, so I have, I also serve John Marshall, Franklin Elementary, and then Riverview. It is, it is difficult sometimes to be able to go and serve those schools to the, I think, the best of our ability. But you know, when they call, some of the reasons, I think, too, why, I've been asked, why would law enforcement respond to an elementary school? Obviously, there aren't, there are younger kids. Why would we be there? So that's kind of, there's like multiple parts to that. Sometimes, it might just be to bring Birdie there to help with some kids that might be escalated that, you know, need that extra time to de-escalate and cool off. There's been challenging kids that, you know, they might be having a really bad day where staff is kind of, at this point, they need some resources to bring in. We're there to help with it. You know, we get, I get a lot of calls from principals. I would say daily, I'm going into one of the elementary schools and talking to staff. The thing I, that I want to point out that I've always looked at when one of my SRO trains I took, was that our SRO position's kind of a three-part system, like a triangle, the best way to put it. Obviously, we are law enforcement, but we're also kind of a school administrator and we're an informal counselor. I have, I don't know how many kids, you know, it, that's what gives me a lot of joy is when a kid chooses me as their safe person at school. And they're coming to me on a daily basis, even if it's just positive stuff, and talking through what's going on at home, getting to know them. And then that's where we also bring into, I think we talked about it later, but we also do, Officer Kutschenreiter and I do hope lessons at the elementary schools. Those are in the spring. We, we talk about mainly internet safety. We talk about alcohol, drugs, things like that. Those are kind of the main topics we touch on. And we do that to the fifth grade classes. A lot of good conversations come out of that. We get to interact with the kids before they're then coming to our middle schools and kind of get to tell them kind of the expectations too of what's going to happen in middle school versus elementary school is very different. So that's another reason we would be at one of the elementary schools as well. Also, I mean, we've had, I've had several threat assessments as well at different elementary schools and working with staff there. You know, a threat assessment in general, our, the system we use here in Wisconsin for threat assessments is based out of law enforcement investigations. I mean, it's very similar to what we would do with regular investigations. So partnering with our school administrators to, you know, make sure we're getting everybody interviewed and getting any information we can and all to make a sound decision on keeping everyone safe.
Great. Thank you. Some other highlights I would just like to point out that haven't been mentioned. One is if we receive like a giggle report after hours because of a student who is indicating self-harm, we reach out right to our SROs. And it's often seven o'clock, eight o'clock, nine o'clock, and they're willing to go to the house because they may know the student. If not, we have just a street officer there, but we're reaching out to Lieutenant Pauls. We're collaborating on the communication, making sure that that student is safe, that student is receiving support, and that if need be, they're transported to crisis. But that is one of the big reasons why the SROs are very helpful in saving lives for students that have like suicide ideology. The other is during a threat investigation. Again, if it's after hours, our SROs and our police department are going to that student's house. They're looking to see if they have access to weapons. They're making sure that it's not a credible threat. And that safety comes back to our buildings. So that if it's six in the morning and we get a threat that a student's bringing a weapon to school, our officers are at those school, are at that house, one, keeping the student home, but also double-checking to make sure that there is no credible threat. And that's a level of safety that like we cannot lose. It is a huge savior for our, our students and our staff and just that level of security. So one, I want to thank you for being met outside of your hours because that provides a higher level of safety for us. The next few slides are really just more highlights. So you've kind of already heard that student relationships are very important. It's the heart of what they do. When we're building those relationships with students, we're not only just providing that level of security, but that able, that person that they can trust, that sense of belonging that they bring to our school. So having that community connection is also a great addition to our SRO program. So I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything because we do have some fun pictures up there. But as you can see, they are, they're, again, not just an SRO in an office waiting to give somebody a citation. They are part of the school community, blending in with teachers, with staff, and with all of our students.
Anything to that? And along with that, and all the highlights that the officers had just explained and described, they even go a little further above and beyond. As a few examples, Nick Stetser has been coaching wrestling at East for the last few years, although he's not coaching. This year, he's helping out. So he's, he's active with the student body and athletes at the school. The same with Officer Kutschenreiter, who is involved with after-school programs. In addition, he's also one of your staff members as a sub-teacher within the district. So he's, he doubles up as much as he can to provide, you know, for the students at the school. So I tip my hat to all of them for doing the extra to make it work.
Can I add just one thing? So before I started in law enforcement, I wore a lot of different hats. But before I wore those hats, I went to school for education, which is actually how I met my, my wife. But one of the big things that was taught in my educational program preparing to teach was differentiated, differentiation and, and meeting people where they're at. And I, I think to, to an individual, each of the SROs that we have in our schools, they're all very capable in providing differentiated services to the students that are in the building. I mean, we're not just working with the kids that are in the office every day or that are, that are having difficulty getting to school on a day-to-day basis. We're also meeting with the kids that are star athletes, the kids that cheated on a test once or twice and might have lunch detention. We're, we're working with a variety of students. We're working with the staff. We're working with the counselors. We work with everyone in the building, supports, support staff notwithstanding. And I think the people that we have selected out of our department are really well-suited to continue making this partnership a really, a really fruitful one. So.
Thank you. I'll just quickly highlight one more I've been conducting since 2017, trying to get us back on track. Some quick highlights. We've started a Wilderness Connection Program back in 2017. And the idea was to create connections between SROs and school staff with identified students. Since then, we've served over a hundred students. Thankfully, we receive a donation from the Wassa Police Department Foundation every year that allows us to continue this trip. We've serviced a hundred-plus students that have had the opportunity to join us on the trip. We've had Chief Barnes. We've had Lieutenant Pauls, most of our officers. And we've transitioned more to a mentoring program where incoming ninth-grade students are paired with upperclassmen so that they can form those relationships, start asking questions about high school, but still connect with the SRO. And that's the main part. So it's still pretty cool that we're almost ten-plus years into this program and it's a pretty popular one with the students.
So like Mr. Grimm said, is that this camping trip has created memories for not only the individuals, but for us as well. And one of the memories is Mr. Grimm flipping his canoe. Just throwing that out there.
I appreciate, appreciate that. Well, and I'll say that, you know, when we talk about relationships, these camping trips not only bring us as colleagues, but I would say we've become friends over the years. That's really the important part when you're, when you're building a connection between school and community. Moving on from our fun activities, it's just an update on our digital mapping. So last year, I shared that the district received a $100,000 grant from the Department of Justice to digitally map every school. This fall, the Collaborative Resource Graphics Agency was able to digitally map. And then this will allow every school resource officer to have a very detailed map of their buildings or the buildings that they serve. And one of the very best top options for this digital mapping is an app that law enforcement, first responders are able to access. And that is one of the biggest reasons why we received this. But I'm going to have Lieutenant Pauls share because he's a little bit more knowledgeable about the law enforcement side.
So we'll have the SROs come up to show you the app itself so you can have a visual while I explain it. But it's, it's based on a GIS mapping system. So you have an overlay of the school, and I'll have the officer with their badge number. So if there, if there's an incident at a school, the radio is not working as an example. We know exactly where the officer's at just based on, on the mapping system. So for response time and having officers responding units assist, they can go directly to the dot instead of trying to figure out where is room 302 as an example. Is it oriented on the north side, the west side of the school? It takes all the guesswork out of the response. When, in addition, as you, those of you that worked in the school before, like the, you start getting into the walls and the radios don't always work. The, walking through the schools with the mapping system so far, there's, there's no dead zones. It's, it's able to be functioning through, throughout every school up to this point in time. So it's, it's a great asset to have moving forward for responding. asset to have moving forward for responding.
One of the reasons why we needed to do a live demonstration is that it is recommended that we do not share these blueprints, so we didn't want to put them on the screen and have it go through that type of a demonstration, so this allows you to still see what the officers see. And the safety aspect is if there's a critical incident in a certain area and we're able to identify that, law enforcement and first responders on the way to the scene will be able to pull up that map as you saw and start creating an entry plan even before they get to that building, which is going to save minutes, which is going to save lives. So that $100,000 grant that we received is going to be, it's already a very huge addition to our safety and security of our district. So glad again that we were able to partner, and Lieutenant Pauls was critical in helping us establish this app. He met with the CRG agency as well and went through that whole process and appreciate your time for that. Well, in closing, we have made great progress creating a safe and secure educational environment, but we have more work to accomplish before the end of the school year. We have started producing some videos that highlight SRO work and what they do in our schools so that other individuals can understand their role. We still need to plan our March School Safety Drill. We will continue to review best practices for conducting a threat assessment, and then we want to start reviewing and revising our reunification plan. So that concludes our safety update, and at this point, we are available if anybody has questions.
A comment and then a question, I guess? First of all, I want to say to Ben and Nick that I'm really sorry that I always say hi to Birdy and Timber before you, and I will actively try when I visit the schools to say hi to you first. I don't know if I will be as excited, but I, you know, will at least say hi to you first. Second of all, I just want to take a moment and really reiterate how lucky we are to have the relationship that we have with all of you and with the police department. We live in a community, in a country, in a world where oftentimes there is distrust and conflict between authority and community. And all of you are providing such a beautiful example of healthy authority as you walk through the buildings, and I see it when I'm there and I'm walking through and I hear it from the students and I hear it from the families. So thank you for that. And then my question is, I'm seeing a lot of boys on this camping trip, so I'm wondering about the connections with the young women. I know you have some phenomenal women on the force. Is this something we're looking towards?
Potentially. So she was unable to join us tonight. We have an SRO in the wings. Officer Kuchner is going to be stepping down after the 26th, school year or so, in May, or June rather. Claire Ostrowski is going to be taking us about to sort of the 26th, 27th school year. She'll be at John Muir. So with that, we've had preliminary discussions about things she can do to start coming up with ideas along the same lines. So not sure what that's going to look like yet, but there's definitely potential for something fun to happen.
It sounds like you guys, you did describe the good work you do and how a lot more could be done even, kind of stretched pretty thin between all the schools. Would you say there would be a benefit to reviewing the SRO program and looking at expanding it, possibly adding additional officers to it?
Personally, I do, yes. I think with the way the school system is acting currently, I personally believe we could utilize two more SROs, strictly elementary, one for each side of the river. I think with the amount of volume that we have and these guys leaving their primary school at John Muir and Horace Mann to help facilitate the elementary schools, it's really stretched them thin, and I just think we could provide a better service to the students and the student body if we were able to allocate more SROs to the elementary.
I know it's not just a, obviously you have to go through budgeting and we'd have to review it and look at everything for the future approval, but I'd like to be a point of contact and start that conversation with you guys if we can, after this, set up a time and a meeting and start looking at those details.
Great.
I'll connect the email and we'll work with, I think you've been working with Mr. V. Gooten, we'll try to get something established and on the calendar.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say, I'm just really impressed with your group that you've presented today. Your work with the at-risk children in our community, the students. I have to say, after traveling the country, it's the youth. If we do not go and make sure that they have that loving and that positive environment that first time, if they realize they've done something wrong, it's not the end of the world, but it is exactly a learning opportunity. I think you guys are in a phenomenal state, giving the teachers and the administrators an extra helping hand. I commend you all for your service and thank you for bringing your guests today because you get just nothing but, just an impressive presentation. I thank you for your work.
I might just jump into and thank them for the partnership with it. We're very, very fortunate. I know we all know that, but I don't think we take it to the level that it is. We're a templo in the state for the relationship between the Wausau School District and the police department. And one of the things that's really amazing is just on the operation side of it. So everybody...
He didn't like what you were saying, so he's...
Cut it off, cut it off. Everybody that's in their seats, applied for the position and received it, it wasn't a placement. They weren't told they're going to do it, they wanted to do it, and you can see it. And so when we talk about school safety, it's awesome because they bring a physical presence to the building for physical safety. What we don't see is the emotional wellbeing that our students have because those guys are working with them, and it's far beyond the criminality or the policing, it's the relationship that they bring. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you all. Thank you for the presentation and everything you do for us.
All right, next we will move on to our Niola Policies update, and I will turn that over to Cale as we review the proposed changes.
I think what we've done in the past is we've just gone through each of the policies, and if there's something that we wanted to pull up and we talked about, that's what we've done. So I'm going to be reading off of the screen. So the first part is Volume 34, Number 2, Overview, Any Questions or Concerns?
The only, the one question I had, which I mentioned to you, Cale, was just there were some policies mentioned there that aren't here. Usually that means administration has reviewed it and decided it wasn't something we're going to adopt, and I think Cassie added one. And thank you to Cassie for highlighting all these changes that made it much easier for my old eyes. But are you able to confirm that with us tonight or at the next meeting that the ones not on here are just ones that have been reviewed, just decided not to add?
Correct. Some of them, Josh has some on here that we'll have to, because he wasn't able to make it yet, that we'll have to bring it back. But we can talk about them in a minute. So do we just want to do a mass, accepting at the end, or do you want to go through each policy now?
I think you should go through them each like we normally do and then we can make the motion at the end. Sometimes the motion works out that we're just going to approve it all if that's the case, and sometimes we take a few out if somebody has questions on them.
Fair enough. 0100 definitions, any questions? Board member behavior and code of conduct. Unrequested leaves of absence, fitness for duty. Summer or interim school attendance. Instructional media center. Employment of substitutes. Employment of personnel for co-curricular extracurricular activities. Termination and resignation. Student supervision and welfare. Entrance age. Third grade promotion and retention. Early graduation. Academic honesty. Soon use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia. Small unmanned aircraft systems, parentheses drones. Property inventory. Staff and school officials' use of personal communication devices. Volunteers. School safety. Food service. Wellness. Free and reduced-priced meals. Vending machines. Use of cameras and other recording devices in locker rooms. Technical correction overview. Meeting minutes. Non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Student privacy and parental access to information. Interscholastic athletics. Personal property of staff members. Personal property of staff members, 4281 versus 3281. 5130 withdrawal, dropout from school. 5200 data zero one full-time student. 5410 promotion, placement, and retention. 5500 student code of classroom conduct. 6144 investment income. 6235 fund balance. 8450.01 personal protective equipment during pandemic epidemic events. 8451 pediculosis, head lice. 8660 transportation by private vehicle. 8800 religious activities and observances. 9150 school visitors.
So I didn't hear questions or comments from anyone as we went through them, and this round seemed to be mostly technical, but were there any remaining questions from board members before I seek the motion on them?
Just make the comment to the public that, again, this is all available to us prior, and we have them all, she did a great job of highlighting, so we can easily resource it, read it, and understand it. We're not just reading these off, so.
Right, and 99% of the time, it's not even new, it's maybe a statutory change with a sentence or two, or maybe some just small corrections, but right, we do have access to all these ahead of time, and so does the public, it's in the board book.
Okay, hearing no further questions, then, I will seek a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the proposed changes to the attached policies. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. That motion carries. And seeking a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. We are adjourned, but we're going right back into another meeting. I'm calling to order the special meeting for Monday, November 24th, 25. I'm requesting a motion to go into closed session for two reasons. First is discussion regarding the competitive negotiations, purchase, sale of real estate pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub-1 sub-E. Second reason is evaluation of superintendent of schools pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub-1 sub-C. So we'll need a first and a second, and then we'll do a roll call. Sure, the board will go into closed session to discuss the sale of property with our broker that had discussed an open session would harm the district's competitive interests. All right, we have a first and a second, we'll do a roll call vote.
Sarah Barak?
Yes.
Charles Berger?
Yes.
John Creacher?
Yes.
Nick Kersherr?
Yes.
Jennifer Paoli?
Corey Sellers?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes. Okay, we will go into closed session. We will come back into open session here if we need to take any action. Yeah.
Yeah.